And good evening and welcome to the August 25th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight, and we're glad to have those that are at home watching. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand, and Mr. Greg Lyles will lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, board members, you have received a copy of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, communications?
Good evening, board. The Williamson County Mayor Rogers Alexandra officially declared yesterday, Monday, August 24th, as Gary B. Anderson Day in Williamson County. So we want to take time to recognize Mr. Anderson and not only the dedication he has given to Williamson County on their school board for over 30 years, 30 years, but also the dedication he's shown to Murfreesboro City Schools. So, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to give him a round of applause.
Your turn.
So, also, thank you to the United Way of Rutherford and Cannon Counties. They officially established the Linda Gilbert Advocacy Award at their annual community celebration last week, recognizing her for her amazing efforts in our community. So we are so proud that our community is recognizing Dr. Gilbert and her service to not only Murfreesboro City Schools, but the city as a whole. The City Schools Foundation would like to recognize the LaRoche Family Foundation and the Richard Segal Foundation for their generous donations towards the purchase of Chromebooks for Murfreesboro City School students. We are just blessed to have these family foundations in our community and their support of our schools. So, Mr. LaRoche, please extend our thank yous to your entire family. The Back to School Dash will be a virtual run this year. I think we announced it last time, but it is Run at Your Own Pace, at Your Own Place. We're thankful that our sponsors have come back on board this year. We're always extremely thankful for our board and their leadership and recognition of what they can do for our city schools. This year, our major sponsors are Children's Dentistry and Orthodontics, City Tile and Floor Covering, Body &amp; Face, Wilson Bank, the LaRoches, and they have all sponsored in years past, too, so we appreciate that. So, you can go ahead and buy your tickets, register for the run, walk, race, however you want to do it is fine. Wherever you want to do it is fine. It's September 12th, and you can find everything on our website. And those are my communications, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Induction of you, is the mayor here?
I haven't seen the mayor, and I've sent him a text. I recommend moving this down to an agenda whenever he comes in that we can interrupt the meeting and make it thin, do it thin.
I'd like to recognize at this time our board evaluators tonight, who are here to evaluate this board. Mr. Jim Estes, who is chairman of the Rutherford County School Board. Jim, if you'll stand, please. Mr. Jeff Jordan, member of the Rutherford County School Board and past chairman, and also Mr. Kevin Townsill, a member of the Franklin Special School Board. We appreciate you gentlemen being with us tonight. Thank you for your time and your service. All right, consent items? You have a motion to approve the consent items as we have them?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, second reading, no, we've done that. Action items. Recognition and approval of the 2019 and 2010 tenure teachers. Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, sir. This is one of the privileges that the school board gets to do normally. A teacher has to serve five years, teach five years in our school system, and the last two years must be a four or five, a level of above expectations or significantly above expectations. Last year, no teacher received an LOE, Level of Affectedness, so they did not receive a score. The state asked us to go back for the last two years. So in years three and four, if they had a four or five, they're eligible for tenure this year. So we have 32 names, 32 individuals that I'm going to recommend that you approve, grant them tenure. We have one at Black Fox, Raven Holmes. Three at Bradley, Macari Harrison, Abby Sanders, and Dana Stem. We have three at Kason Lane, Sonia Cox, Jessica McElroy, Megan Pullen. We have two at Discovery School, Catherine Holmes and Tiara Vance. We have two at Irma Segal, Stephanie Jones and Kimberly Taylor. We have two at Hobgood, Nicole Bell and Aubrey Denton. We have two at Mitchell Nelson, Sydney Rawls and Michelle Slusher. We have two at Northfield, Emily Brown and Lauren Hunley. We have three at Overall Creek, Shelby Mallory, Elizabeth Owens, Whitley Troutman. We have four at Pittard, Hannah Brasher, Alex Juno, Tanya McLean, Callie Roller. We have three at Reeves Rogers, Randy Carter, Anna Reed, Lanelle Lanelle. We have five at Scales, Charlotte Crusoe, Kimberly Hicks, Kayla Richards, Rachel Slough, Gina Surgener. These 32 individuals have been with us for five years, and we would like to recommend that the board grant them tenure tonight.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the list to grant tenure?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Saddles. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the 2021 ESP Advisory Board. You see there, we have at least one parent representative from each school. We have a teacher representative and an ESP site director. And then Candy Powers, who's running everything in ESP, she's going to be on the advisory board as well. We recommend that you approve this advisory board tonight.
I have a question.
Have a question, Mr. Saddles?
How often does this advisory board meet? I think we, I asked that one year before, I can't remember.
Well, last year, I think we only met one time, since we, we'd like to meet at least once each semester, once in the fall and once in the spring.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the advisory board?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Saddles. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Next, we have the 2020-2021 Pre-K Advisory Council. You see there, we have some business leaders, some teachers, some instruction people on this committee. Recommend that you approve this tonight.
Do we have a motion to approve the City Schools Advisory Council?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. It's hard to tell these masks. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, reports and information? Revenue and expenditure report, Mr. Anderson?
Good evening, board. You received in your board packet the revenue expenditure report, and you received tonight at your seat, a new revised report. The first report is we have to do an estimate based on the timing of when we get the money on the sales tax and property taxes. We have to do an estimate. Well, good news is we're up $240,000 over the original projected report. So, good news is your new report shows what our revenue picture is and how we ended the year. Obviously, we were in the black. That's always a good thing to be. And so, we're, you know, that's what our report shows this year. We had additional property taxes and additional sales taxes higher than both projections, and that's really what helped us out. We didn't get as much growth money as we anticipated because the state, when they closed school down, they doubled up the sixth period and didn't count the seventh period, and we typically do grow in the seventh period as well. So that kind of hurt us in our growth for that one. So those are our, that's our financial report of where we are for the end of the year. And this is not audited yet. You will get your audit report usually in November or December, whenever they finish, the auditor finishes with it. If anyone had any questions?
Any questions on the, yes, sir, Mr. Ballard?
Okay, Mr. Anderson, it looks like we're in the favorable position of $93 million in revenue, and we budgeted $85 million in revenue. Where did the surplus come from? And does that, does that survive as surplus monies? Or is that?
Well, what ends up as being our surplus is the amount on the first page, which shows $264,000. That's our surplus. When we had the additional revenues, we also had offsetting additional expenditures when we added teachers during the year, beginning of the year, because we were growing. And so the offset is there. Really, the only, the only amount that falls through to the fund balance line is the 264,203.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand then. So we say we, our revenue then for the entire year was $93 million. And we budgeted $85,000. So $200,000, as you're explaining, doesn't seem to make up the 8 million. I'm just trying to understand, did we, did we perform so well that we ended up with, or was there a surprise extra amount of budget money flowing to us in revenue?
Well, revenues, remember, we always use our fund balance to help balance our budget. So what that means is we used less of our fund balance when we had this amount. The report that you get is an operating report for, really, it's a cash position report. It's really not a true report for where we are because it shows what happens during that month. So in other words, the June sales tax collections, we only found out yesterday, and here we are at the end of August. It's always two months behind. And property tax is about the same way. So what you see is that we used fund balance monies to balance the overall budget, and we do every year.
Okay. Well, I know you're doing a great job taking care of it, but sometimes I have a hard time getting my head around those numbers. To me, just looking at it, it says we've got $8 million going forward that we've can use as a revenue. Or it has to go back to somebody.
I wish, but no, it doesn't end up that, doesn't end up that way. We did have more, more revenue come in than we had initially projected. But remember, we had revised budgets during the year where you approved a bunch of resolutions for different accounts, where we increased or decreased the accounts. So it never works out that way. When you find out the true overall account is during the audit report that you do get, and it shows you every single line item. Like I said, this is more of a cash flow report.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
You thank?
I thank, I'm good.
You thank? I thank you.
I didn't, I didn't see any parentheses, so we're okay.
Yes, I was very glad to see we didn't have the little parentheses around it and the red ink. I'll only print it in black and white for you, so you won't see the red ink.
Yeah, I was going to say, so we had a conservative budget. We brought in more on the revenue side. It looks like you got $8 million, but you really don't because that's kind of going back to a fund balance where we've had to borrow. To balance the budget out, so what we actually have going back into fund balance is $264,203, which is still a very positive cash position.
It's, we budgeted to use $2 million and something in fund balance. It's, we used less than that.
Sure.
We still use fund balance. Whole idea is to try to not use too much fund balance so you have more and more, and you've got to have 3%
Sure.
at the end of the year. So it really, it really, this, this report just shows you what's going on at this time. It doesn't give you the full picture, and you see that, like I said, in the audit report.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anytime it looks like this, I'm happy.
Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Thank you, Ms. Saddles. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. LaRoche. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, enrollment report.
All right, the next thing is our enrollment report, and this is as of today. It's our ninth full day of school, and we have 8,851 students, counting our pre-K and our special needs and our regular ed students. And we're 407 students less than we were at the end of last year. Every school district is down right now. Some have gone private school, some have gone homeschool. So we really, it's kind of a rough, a rough position for every school district to be in right now because of the drop in enrollments. We didn't give you any average attendance percentage because it's changing on us daily of how we're going to be calculating who's homeschool, who's at school. And so we're, we're dealing with that. But overall, our PTR is 18.12 for our K through C grade band, and we are, was it 19? No, 18.94 for our 4 through 6 grade band. So our PTR is actually excellent now, but that's a lot of it because you hire the teachers, and then you see how many are going to end up showing up. So we're behind where we were last year, but I believe every district's in the same boat.
This is the year that we really need lower people teacher ratio in our classrooms because many of our teachers are teaching a hybrid classroom. Half of them are in-person, the other half are distance learners. So this is the year that we really need to have lower PTRs.
Ms. Barton?
I just wanted to comment on something Mr. Ringstaff just mentioned, the hybrid. I spent a couple hours in one of our schools Friday and observed a hybrid. And I just want teachers out there to know that we took an already difficult job and made it even more difficult, and we realize that. You know, I know what the limitations are, I know why we're doing it, but it is unbelievable to watch because there are so many things that happen that don't happen when you just have one or the other. So I just want to give a shout out to all our teachers, especially those teaching hybrid. And while I'm shouting out, talk to nurses. Some of them are actually going back to their schools on weekends and trying to catch up on paperwork. So the first of the year is always stressful, but this year especially with all the changes, all the things that are going on, they're just, they're going above and beyond expectations, and I just want to thank them for that.
Thank you. Well said. Do we have a motion to approve the enrollment report? Thank you, Ms. Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel report?
Mr. Chair, before I do that, I just want to let you know that Mayor McFarland is not going to be with us tonight. There's a misunderstanding. But Councilman Kurt Wade is going to come and do the induction. So we're supposed to stall until he gets here. So we'll start talking a little bit slower.
Personnel report, you want to take long time to give us?
We can go by each one individually. This is for your information only, not, no approval needed for this, but this is just a report of certified hires and certified resignations. Then we go to the classified. So if you have any questions, this is until, from 5:22 until now, since you've had, well, last month.
Since we've got a lot of time, how does this compare from, to last year? You know, just offhand, just?
It's, well, last year, we opened up Salem, and we hired 120 teachers initially.
Not a fair comparison.
It's hard to compare. It's fewer, a lot less.
It would be sad if we had more. Okay, okay.
Thank you. Ms. Saddles?
I did have another question. It's kind of related, but not exactly. It has to do with subs. And how are we using subs? Have we had to, I know we're only like nine days actually in, but?
It's a very good question. We've had to quarantine several classes, as you know. And we've been very fortunate. The way we open up the schools is we have 54% in the buildings, 54% of our students in the buildings, and 46% out of our buildings and doing distance learning. And if a teacher has to quarantine with her class, she's going to teach that class from her home.
Okay.
And if she does have some in schools, traditional students, we can transfer those students to another classroom. And so we don't need a sub in that situation.
We can't, we are mixing classes then? I thought we weren't going to do that.
For two weeks, and then they go back.
Because the teacher is the one who's quarantined.
It's better to have a certified teacher teaching those students than a sub.
Yeah. That was my question, because I thought about subs and how that could be. I mean, like Roseanne was saying, we're already asking the teachers to do a Herculean task, and then to put a sub in that position, I thought would be really a lot. So I'm glad to know that.
And we're interviewing subs three or four days a week, and we did a sub orientation today. We're doing maybe one every two weeks, sub orientation with 20, 25 new subs.
Mr. Ballard?
Did you get any feedback that the additional monies we approved for subs is helping? I mean, I know it's not hurting, but I mean, has anybody said, well, that inspired me to come be a sub?
No, no feedback yet. We've, we've sent out an email alert and things like that.
Yeah. I'd follow up, too. Okay, back to the quarantining. I know the Department of Health modified the quarantine rules. Positive contact, you do have to quarantine, but if there's no, there's no, it's just suspected contact. It's not positive, or contact with a positive carrier, then there's no quarantine required for the person or the class.
It's not required, but we did that in two cases last week, and I'll, I'll explain. We had a child in one grade that tested positive. His sibling was in another grade. That sibling started exhibiting symptoms. We went ahead and quarantined that class. Now, the sibling tested negative, ended up testing negative, and we brought that class back after three days.
Okay, okay. But in the case of someone coming in and say, well, I think I was at a party, or I was at a party and I rubbed shoulders with someone that had COVID or thought they had COVID or had symptoms, we don't have to quarantine for that, right?
No, sir. We don't have to.
Okay, and also it mentions, the article I was catching up on, it said, teachers, they're okay to continue to teach if they have no symptoms and they're teaching with a mask, even if there's someone in the household who's positive.
That's called critical infrastructure, and I'm not going to ask you to approve that. It would have to be board-approved for the school system to do that, and I'm not going to ask you to do that. I don't think any school system around is going to ask their boards to do that. I don't want to take that risk.
Yeah.
That's just putting, I think it's going to hurt us in the long run if we did something like that.
Mr. LaRoche?
Yeah, this might be a question more for Ms. Taylor, but I've gotten several emails this week requesting that we are more transparent about which classes and which schools have been quarantined and what, and for what reasons. I think that's an understandable desire that parents have. My understanding is that we, as a school system, are limited in what we can say. Is that true? Is there, is there more we could be doing as a school system? Or are we so, so bound by state and federal law above us that we really have to keep being so secretive about which classrooms are quarantined?
So the risk with that comes in is at a high level, you can say we quarantine a first grade class or a second grade class. But the more granular we get, the more at risk we are for exposing confidential information about a student. So I mean, it would depend case by case, I guess, what the information is that we're exposing. Can we say, yes, we had to quarantine a first grade classroom? I think so, because there's a real risk there of identifying any confidential student information. But if we get into whether it was a teacher or a student or things like that, where people can piece two and two together, we might bear the risk of exposing confidential information about somebody that we should not be exposing.
Some of our classrooms only have five students, and so it'd be pretty easy to identify which student tested positive without giving a name.
Are we following the same set of rules within the school that we are as a system? And I guess what I'm asking is, would a parent in a particular school have more information provided to them than our system or we as a school board would receive?
I would hope not. I would hope that we're consistent across the district. Because when we have a case, we have to contact the Department of Health, and they basically take over. They tell us what to do.
And I know when parents, if a classroom has to be quarantined, the parents in those classrooms are provided information. And I believe, I don't know if Sarah is here, she can provide more detail, but I think the letter, if I remember correctly, would say, you know, somebody in your child's classroom was suspected of having COVID, but your child was not exposed, or we have no reason to believe that your child was exposed, or vice versa. Someone tested positive, but we do think your child was exposed, so your child's going to be quarantined for X amount of time.
But those would be a communication with the parents individually, not something released to a larger group?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Barton?
And we're doing some contact tracing within our system, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I was told, so.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to comment on the certified resignations, retirements, and terminations. I'm happy but surprised that that number only has nine in it, so maybe our teachers are hanging on here with us. Is that, are you feeling that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, and we're working with them as best we can.
Okay.
Ms. Ringstaff, we have a, why?
ESP program presentation?
We want to go ahead with that?
Yes, sir. Please. I would like for Candy Powers, she's running everything in ESP right now. And we opened up ESP about two weeks before our schools opened up, and I would like for her and Alyssa to give us a little update on ESP.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, board. We are happy to be here tonight to give you a quick update on the Extended School Program. And for anyone in the room that's unfamiliar with ESP, that is the Extended School Program that operates before. that operates before and after-school hours in all 13 of our schools. The goal of our program is to provide a safe, educationally-enriching, most of all, fun and rewarding experience for our students that stay with us after school. Currently, our enrollment numbers right now, and actually, this presentation was finished last week, so our current enrollment number as of this afternoon is 1,550 students. Now, typically, by the end of a school year, we will have almost 3,000 students enrolled, right around that number. I think last year, we were right at 3,001. But because of everything that's going on, and the number of distance learners we have that are not in the schools to attend our program, our numbers are much lower, of course, right now. We fully expect, and we are still getting enrollments on a daily basis, just from Friday, we've gone up 45 students. So, we think by Christmas, that number will creep up closer to 2,000, surpass 2,000. So, I think we're okay with these numbers right now. We have, first of all, I want to, Ralph mentioned Alyssa Cole, I want to introduce one of our site directors. She is, Alyssa, come on up, she is the site director at Black Fox Elementary. She's an amazing director, just like all 13 of our directors are. She has a background in communication, and she actually served under Lisa Trail and did her internship in the Communications Department there. So, she is going to try her hat tonight at giving you the rest of this board presentation. So, I'd like to turn this over to Alyssa Cole.
Well, thank you, Candy, and thank you, Board, for having me tonight. I also want to take this opportunity to just say, I'm so grateful to work for City Schools. As a former student, it's just such an awesome connection to have, to be able to work for City Schools. So, the first thing I want to talk about is just some of the changes that we've implemented in ESP throughout all of the COVID guidelines and things that are going on. So, during ESP, we are following the same guidelines as Murfreesboro City Schools. All of our students have their temperatures taken before they enter the building, along with our staff. All of our students and staff are required to wear face masks while they're with us. We social distance whenever we can, and we also encourage frequent hand-washing as well. Something that's a little different this year is that our students are remaining with the same group throughout the week. So, in the past, our enrichment classes change every single day, so those kids are with different groups of kids every single day, but this year, we've, we're not letting that happen, just so we can contact trace a little easier and things like that. But our students are still getting those enrichment classes, they just rotate through them as a group. And we hope to resume our normal student choice enrichments in January. This is just a list of some of the different enrichment classes that we offer during ESP. We, of course, have sports classes, like basketball, soccer, flag football, things like that. But really, a lot of the classes that we're doing are very STEAM-based. So, we have a class called Cardboard Challenge, and this is where kids are invited to build anything they can dream up using cardboard and recycled materials. We have another one called Design Squad, and this is where students collaborate and work together to tackle different engineering projects. Duct Tape Engineers is a class where students design and create everyday items using just duct tape. We also have Lego Robotics, which is one of our kids' favorite classes to participate in. They use iPads and Lego kits to build and program robots. So, that's a really awesome one to kind of observe and watch. And we also have a class called Makerspace. This provides hands-on creative ways to encourage students to design, experiment, build, and invent. We have another class called Math Madness, that helps to reinforce math skills for our students by playing different math games. We also have a class called Movie Maker. It's an animation class where students use Legos and iPads to create different animation movies. We also offer some science-based enrichments called Fuddlebrooks, Quercils, and Mystery Science, and these give students the opportunity to conduct their own science experiments. Edible Education and Cooking with Kids are two of our favorite classes that we offer. With teacher's guidance, the students are able to get hands-on experience cooking real food. And then they're also, of course, able to enjoy that after they make it. We do offer homework help and provide each student time to complete their assignments before they go home for the day. And also, I wanted to mention, our fifth and sixth graders are in a yearbook class this year, so they will be using Canva, which is an online graphic design website, to put those yearbooks together. We do have a new class that we're starting this year. We're actually piloting it, piloting it at one of our sites at Overall Creek. It's a class called Drone Legends, and it's actually a virtual drone club where students will learn how to pilot a drone. And the way this works is, an instructor will Zoom in, but we'll have an ESP staff there in the classroom to provide that hands-on help for the students, but all the instruction will come via Zoom. This was offered to us as a free trial, and if it's successful, we hope to expand it to more of our sites. So, during ESP, we also offer a tutoring program at eight of our schools through the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. And this program serves up to 500 of our students across the district, and certified teachers tutor students in math and reading. These sites include Black Fox, Bradley, Kason Lane, Hobgood, John Pittard, Mitchell Nelson, Northfield &amp; Reeves Rogers. So, at the sites that don't have the 21st Entry Grant, we do offer ESP scholarships at Discovery, Ermas Eagle, Overall Creek, Salem &amp; Sales. And I think the main thing to take away from this is that we want all of Murfreesboro City School students to attend ESP without anything hindering them. So, between the 21st Entry Grant and our ESP scholarships, there's opportunities for every family within City Schools to attend ESP, and we try not to exclude anyone. And we also wanted to give you just a little peek into some of the things that we've had happening in ESP over the last month or so since we've been opened. So, like I mentioned, a lot of our classes are very STEAM-based, so here you see some pictures of students. One's constructed a sailboat, you see some boys working together to construct a maze, and then you see another student who built a structure, and they were testing it with Jell-O to see if it was strong enough to withstand an earthquake. So, we get to do really fun things like that in ESP. Here are just some more STEAM highlights. You see some students using cardboard and recycled materials on projects. Another student with a model airplane that he built using Legos. I think I skipped to the end, let me go back a few. And we also offer craft classes during ESP. This is always a big hit with our little kids. A lot of times, these crafts are done after a student, or after the teacher has read them a piece of literature, a book, and then they do a craft to go along with that. And then, of course, we want to give our students every opportunity to be, opportunity to be active and work on their team-building skills, so whether that's in the gym, or outside, or even just playing board games with their friends. One really awesome project that's going on right now is actually happening at John Pittard. So, the third through sixth graders in ESP there are working together to construct a house. So far, they've created a blueprint of the house and sketched out designs for outdoor furniture. And to construct the house, they're using popsicle sticks, glue, sandpaper, paint, homemade stamped baked grass. It's really important that the staff that we bring in to work with these kids are well-prepared. So, we offer multiple professional development sessions for them, and most of them are geared towards incorporating state standards into their daily lessons after school. Some of the required trainings we have are CPR, first aid, child abuse reporting, bloodborne pathogens, new staff orientation, de-escalation, and assortative practices. And like I mentioned, those standards are embedded into after-school activities, and most of them pit on reading and math. We also employ over 100 certified teachers to assist with reading and math tutoring, keyboarding skills, homework help, and the more academic enrichment classes. Of course, ESP would not be possible without our community partners, so we just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Murfreesboro Police Department, MTSU, MCS teachers, principals, and staff, MCS Transportation and Nutrition Departments, the United Way, the Girl Scouts of Middle Tennessee, the Discovery Center in Centerstone. Now, normally, from year to year, this list is very long, but we expect this list to grow throughout the year. MTSU just went back last week, so a lot of our partners come from there, so hopefully, once they kind of get back in the swing of things, they'll be back in our schools. We are looking forward to a really great year in ESP this year. We invite any of you to come to our sites after school and kind of see what we've got going on. We have some awesome things going on, and it would be really great for you guys to see. So, thank you for having us. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am, for a very good report. I appreciate you got a lot going on, and it's great to have it going on.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Councilman Kurt Wade's here.
All right, Councilman Wade is here, we will now have the induction of your newly-elected board members. Councilman Wade?
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Glad to be here, how about that? Actually, I just finished speaking to a group of Girl Scouts over at Trinity United Methodist Church, and they were like, "Where are you going, you just got here?" And I said, "I got to go somewhere." And I'm glad to be here, but could I get Jimmy Richardson, Butch Campbell, Wes Ballard, and David Topples to come around? He could probably come over here, yeah, I'm sure people want to take pictures of you guys. Handsome-looking young men. All right, you guys raise your right hand. Aye?
Aye.
Say your name. In accordance with Section 25-5 of Murfreesboro City Code, I do solemnly swear a firm that I will support the Constitution, the State of Tennessee, and the United States and the Acts of the Constitution, the Charter of the City of Murfreesboro, that I will faithfully, desultantly, and impartially discharge the duties of members of this Murfreesboro City School Board and the City of Murfreesboro without fear, favor, for the public welfare. That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. See how simple that was?
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Yeah, let me give you your certificate. I will.
Do you think that calls for a round of applause for our new board member?
Thank you.
Wes? That ain't yours. Let me say this before we leave. Hey, I want to appreciate, to give you guys a really appreciation of what you do and how you stand up for our community. A lot of times, people take this for granted. This is not an easy task, and we, we have a lot of things to do, a lot of things going on with our City of Murfreesboro. And I know you don't get to hear this often, but we appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We want to take just a minute tonight, and maybe more than a minute, we want to recognize Mr. David Larr. David, would you stand and come down here and stand beside me for just a minute? We want to tell you how much we appreciate the time you have spent with us on the school board and the influences that you have had, and you have been a wonderful board member. And we appreciate your service, and we hate to see you leave, but we understand. But on behalf of the Murfreesboro City School System and the board, we present you this token of our appreciation, and again, thank you very much.
Well, I'll take my, the moment just to say, it's been a real honor working with all of you and being a, being a part of the Murfreesboro City School System. You know, I think we've got the best teachers, administrators, and students in the world. No offense to the county, but I'm partial. It's really been great, it's been an eye-opening experience. I don't think it's for everybody, but I'm happy to, you know, share what I have learned with anybody that cares to ask, and I wish all of you the best of the future, and please don't be strangers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have anything else to come before our board tonight? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Goff?
I would like to ask if, at what meeting in the future that we might be willing to bring back the Board of Director, Director of Schools discussion?
We will discuss that probably on our meeting September the 10th, which will be on a Thursday night. We'll meet at the central office. Don't forget, September the 8th is our Fall District Meeting in Williamson County. And do we know where it's going to be?
Yes.
It's in- In Williamson Professional Development Center.
Okay, that is, now what Tammy told me the other night was that unless the governor changes that, and if he does, we may have to do it by Zoom, is that right? But we'll be notified about-
It could be virtual, yes.
But that's on September the 8th, and we'll go forward with the other later on, okay? All right. Anything else coming before the board? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Of a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much, and have a good evening.